Alright, so it's about six o'clock. It's Thursday, June the 6th. I'm gonna call the regular select board meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. First item, set adjust agenda where we have a really long agenda.
No changes?
Unless you've got something pressing. Next is communication from the audience. Anyone here to communicate anything to us that's not on our agenda? Excellent. Next, select board to approve minutes from the last regular select board meeting, which was May 16 and special meeting, May 28.
I can motion to approve the regular select board meeting minutes of May 16 and the special select board meeting minutes of May 28 as written.
Second. And a second. So, any discussion? I thought it looked good. I wasn't at the special meeting, but minutes look good. All in favor of approving them as the written, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next, town manager report given by Mr. Upson.
Okay. So, the Emergency Watershed Protection Project, we got one bid from an engineering firm to do the technical assistance for those three properties. The one in East Hare, like, and the two along the river.
Yep, yep.
I've sent that back to the bid, or the one proposal was $170,000. We have $42,000 in technical assistance funding. I sent that proposal, that loan proposal that we received, back to NRCS at their request. They're going through it now and the plan tentatively is that the NRCS is gonna do the technical assistance, which they said they weren't going to do. But they have hundreds of properties in this program and they're not getting, some of the towns are getting no bids from engineers. So they're gonna do the technical assistance on two of the riverbanks and...
Which are where?
What's up?
Where are the riverbanks? Which ones? We talking about?
The one is up on Route 15.
By the...
The people that, yeah, so yeah, and one by the old Jerome building.
There's that one and then the other.
One up by Gilchrist?
Yes.
Yep. And then where else? Where's the other?
And then the other one's the River House in East Hare.
The River House.
Old Post Office.
Foundation is under my, so the plan is the NRCS is gonna do the technical assistance. They're gonna revamp the engineering for those riverbanks and then we'll, they're gonna communicate with the engineer that submitted the proposal and they're gonna negotiate that independently.
Awesome.
Great.
That's great.
To get what they don't do done through that.
Yeah, to lower the, lower the...
So they're gonna pick up some of the workload, which will take costs down for them.
Yeah.
And they'll pay the bill and the rest.
So we'll, we will have to accept that bid, but we just don't have that proposal, but we just don't have the final product. So that project is ongoing and it's...
Great. Yeah.
The wastewater plant, I figured I'd give you guys an update on that, on the current project down there. We have, the liner is installed in Lagoon 1. It's filling back up. The aeration is in and three blowers are going. We're airing both lagoons now and we'll be, once the lagoon level gets up to 10 feet, they'll be able to install the, the hydraulic curtain is in, they'll be able to install the floating cover on the anaerobic reactor cell. So this is like one of the final pieces left of the project and then they're doing final grading and they, we have a little bit, I think there's like 142,000, 100, right around there, left in the budget and we signed a change order to remove the underground storage tank, the fuel tank for the boiler that wasn't in the original project. It's going there. So that's gonna happen and we're gonna do that before we do the final grading and paving it down on the driveway. They, the Yellow Barred Project had to do the sewer connection, which they think has been done. I don't know the final outcome of that, but then we're gonna, once those two projects are done, right in the front of the wastewater plant, then we'll do the finish grading and the driveway paving. So that project is wrapped up.
One question. Out in front where they were stockpiling sand?
Yep.
Looked like that's been seeded and mulched.
Yep.
I thought we were gonna gravel that.
Yeah.
So, that wasn't part of the sewer project.
I know.
That's the sewer project.
Okay.
They're just turning it into grass. We can still put gravel there.
Yeah, that was just their bed was to me.
Alright.
Yeah.
So, what, I had asked about the trailhead that's still, we're working on that?
The trailhead in the bushes?
No, the whole, the trailhead itself.
Yeah.
Alright.
And that whole area is different than it was.
Yeah.
And then last week, we, the MRF Project, which is the municipal energy recovery project that the Energy Committee spearheaded, came and did energy assessments and blower doors on all of our town buildings. So they were able, through this program, which is administered by EGS, which is Buildings and Grounds with the state, that, so it's a state-funded project, they're coming in and doing energy audits and assessments on all our town buildings. They found a lot of holes in this building, but identified where they were and they're doing a report that will be submitted back to us with recommendations as to how to move forward. There's some high priority projects that we've identified, which is the heater, or the furnace, which is an air handler, an oil-fired air handler in the, in the ceiling of the addition at the, at the police station, which is, is an accident waiting to happen. There is an oil line that goes through the whole building and it runs about 90 PSI and if it sprang a leak, it's pumping oil all the way up to the ceiling in that building. So we're gonna address that first and then down here, the windows and the uniketers are another high priority project. So we're trying to cut the cost of heating, well, heating fuels in all these municipal buildings. So hopefully this project will, in the end, will be saving some money on heat.
And also possibly saving the building from being dented.
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a nightmare out there, that heater. And then I have one last thing that I have to take ownership of that's happening in town. It was a mistake that I made when I granted permission for a youth in the town to spray paint over the homophobic and racial slurs in, underneath the bridge. And at first, I laid out some pretty good guidelines and they started out, the project started out going well and then the spray paint came out from under the bridges and then we had a Facebook discussion, which was good and I take full responsibility for it and I think it was a social experiment that may have gone awry, but I'm okay with it because it got people chatting on Facebook and angry about things and it spurred some discussion. So that's what we want in, in the community right now, is discussion. And I have an addendum to my manager's report and I'd like to bring in Rose Freeman from the Civic Standard to outline the, her, the path forward.
Can I, can I go into the past and the future?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Let me give my little, little talk.
Yeah.
Okay, so I wrote a little thing.
This is damage control.
Tell the story. It's not, I don't think it's damage control. We have a little disagreement about that.
Yeah.
I think it's a great story about bigger issues in the community and so I'm just gonna give a little context for the whole thing. So, we started thinking last year about the kids who skateboard through town, which we know is a big issue and makes a lot of drivers feel rightfully stressed and kinda panicked. And we realized that those were a lot of the same kids that were making adults in town nervous for a lot of different reasons and finding themselves getting in trouble for other things besides just skateboarding down Main Street. So, here's, here's the little thing I wrote. So instead of asking, "How can we keep them out of trouble?", we asked, "What kind of event could we pull them into? What kind of thing would they actually come to at the Civic?". And so we started by asking that they wanted to get together to talk about building a skate park in town because we figured that was a way to hook them into something that they felt really connected with and just start to have a regular conversation with them. So, out of that initial meeting, a new organization was formed, which we started calling a committee, but then became the Hardwick Skate Park Collective when they, once they recognized what a collective was and that there was more shared power in that. So that's a group of young men ages 13 to 19 who are working on the very beginning steps of like seeing what the possibility is of getting a skate park built in town, possibly talking to the school and other landowners about a place where they could safely skate, not on the street. So since that first meeting, we've held a fundraising dinner, hosted a slideshow about skate park culture, designed and told sweatshirts to begin a fund for our eventual park, and organized meetings with local leaders and skate park designers. We meet every Tuesday at 3:30. So last month, one of the members of that collective approached our town manager with an official request of graffiti under the bridge on the north end of town. There were some offensive things written there and the graffiti would be a colorful way to cover over the worst of it. Our town manager saw an opportunity in this question to grant permission for something that this kid could easily have done without asking permission, but for which he had consciously chosen to ask. So he said yes, with a few caveats, the graffiti must be contained only under the bridge and no vulgar images allowed. And he then reached out to the Civic to ask if we could help to kind of oversee that project, help them to get the spray paint they needed and help to kind of see what, how they did that. So we did that. We took them to Obashan's and then we brought them to the bridge and we watched them actually paint this frog and some of their like colorful tags, that are their personal tags, and that was it. And they had used up pretty much all of the paint that we had supplied them with. And then in the days that followed, the images were, other images were suddenly appearing all over town and we were continuing a conversation with those boys to ask them, "Did you do that? Was that yours? Was that yours?". And most of them, they did not, they said it was not them. And some of the stuff is vulgar and is like putting themselves, like putting their own names on there. So it's questionable if people are sort of targeting each other or if people are making fun of each other through the graffiti. So there's a lot of stuff out there that wants to be dealt with, that wants to be cleaned up or covered in some way. So now we're in a very different conversation. So the Facebook post that, that Obu talked about was on the What's Happening in Hardwick, Vermont site. If you haven't seen it, there's like 45 comments about supporting the kids and their right to graffiti as an expression, agreeing with the original poster that the stuff is ugly and offensive, discussing the subjectivity of aesthetics in general. I mean, it's a really wide-ranging conversation. So at our last collective meeting, a couple of weeks ago, we talked about what we could do about this cleanup and we decided to explore finding a professional graffiti or mural artist who might be able to help us cover over the worst of it, ideally someone who might be able to work with the kids to design and implement some new artwork. And maybe some of it is clean-up-able, but there's a few spots that we think would be a really nice spot for public art also, so that might be a possible solution. So this collective meets every Tuesday at 3:30. We welcome anybody to come. We feel like this is a good vehicle for solving this problem as well because it's already an organization that's in the process of fundraising and grant writing. So we're now looking at public art grants as a possible next step for this. That's, that's my story.
And that concludes my report and hopefully these kids can do the mural on the Yellow Bar project.
I've seen some of the art. I don't know if it would be the best.
Okay.
Have you spoken to him?
Yes.
You've spoken to him?
Yes, throughout the whole, throughout.
Ordeal.
Yeah.
Who's that?
I have a question about the energy audits.
Yes.
Because we have one for the townhouse. We did one years ago.
Yeah.
They weren't able to do a blower test because of the...
They didn't do a blower test in areas where there's...
Yeah. So we already have that. It's not like...
Vermiculate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not like we need another one. We know what we're supposed to do.
We don't have a model in the building.
Okay.
They didn't spend a ton of time there.
Okay.
They just, they just did the lights, the heat, the anything that consumes energy.
Okay.
Yeah. That was something that the Energy Committee spearheaded.
Yeah, well, they did the other one too.
Yeah.
The then-energy, they did the other one. Okay.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Thank you, Rose.
Yeah.
I'm gonna skip the road department report and I'm gonna move right to the Harvard Police Department report given by Mike Henry.
So we got two, two people who are gonna be starting the academy next week, part-time academy, Level 2. Everything's good to go there. The academy's going through the change right now. The executive director has resigned and so the deputy executive director will be stepping up to that role, which is a good thing. So, with that, the Mill Street road sign down there, the solar sign that we have for speed, we've been working on that forever, trying to get that to work. We're still working with company, trying to figure out what's wrong with it. We've sent stuff in, got it back, the town has put, put it back up and it's still broken. So, we're working on that. We are aware. And going back to Tom, road report, we're getting a lot of positive feedback from all the crosswalks that have been put in. Really nice job. Want to thank Tom for getting that done.
Yeah, they look nice.
They, there have been a lot of comments about how they feel like people are, are paying more attention to the crosswalks. And they were attested, so I'd like to see us move forward with doing the other crosswalks in that way when we're ready to do those.
Yeah.
In that style.
Yeah.
Let's see how they wear. Is this significantly more expensive? And I also heard that they, at night, they are not as...
It's not as reflective.
...desk and, and, you know, that conditions, right? Stuff, they're not as bright as the white. I haven't checked it out myself, but that's what I heard. It's my, it's what, they definitely look good in the sun.
There's the white element. Maybe they need to use a different paint on the white part.
Yeah, you know, during the day, they definitely stick out much, much better, for sure.
You good?
Good.
Nice, thank you.
See what you're saying.
Appreciate it.
It's quick.
Yeah.
Under 60 seconds.
Moving along. Item one, select board consider approving a liquor license and tobacco license, which was in here somewhere.
I make a motion that we approve a first-class license for Harbick House Pizza, tobacco license for DG Retail LLC, doing business as Dollar General.
Second?
Any discussion on those?
No, no infractions or anything.
That's what it says at the bottom.
Yeah.
So, alright, so all in favor of approving those licenses, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, select board, item two, select board to hear from Daughters of the American Revolution about a community memorial garden.
Should I come over?
Sure, just, you can stand and just tell us your name and...
I'm Janine Young and this is Elaine Bellevance. We are both members of the Daughters of the American Revolution of the St. John de Quemacar Chapter, which is out of St. John's Berry. The Daughters of the American Revolution are, have a project where they install Never Forget Gardens for our locate, for our veterans. We are considering sponsoring a Never Forget Garden somewhere. I, and some of us are looking at probably at the memorial park here in Harbick. It'd be a good idea since it's already got veterans monuments and recognizes veterans at, at the park. Just a suggestion at this point, the chapter hasn't even decided if we're going to do a garden, but we have to find out if there's a place that we do want. The, a little bit about the Never Forget Gardens. The Tomb of the Unknown Soldier Never Forget Garden is a nationwide invitation to all Americans and freedom-loving people to plant gardens as a visual way to represent America's unwavering commitment to our sacred duty to recognize, remember, and honor our veterans and their families now and for many years to come. DA, chapters, and members are encouraged to work with local government agencies, cemeteries, parks, garden clubs, and service organizations to promote and plant the gardens. This is a wonderful conservation opportunity to plant gardens as a visual way to honor veterans. These gardens can contain some or all of the suggested plants or use native plants. There's no restriction on the plants or the design and native plants generally require less water and care. A Never Forget Garden has an official 11-by-17-inch stone, Never Forget Garden marker from the Daughters of Honor Guard of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. Our chapter would provide that marker and will be donated by actually one of our members. A Never Forget Garden uses the language of flowers as a time-honored way to express patriotism and connect each of us to all those who have served and sacrificed on behalf of America as well as our commitment to the values that define us as Americans. I'm not sure who takes care of your memorial park at, here in town. I didn't notice any flower gardens there. I don't know if there are any flower gardens. I haven't noticed one. Took some pictures and didn't see a flower garden. But I don't know who, like Moses, if the town Moses, if you hire that out.
We won, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If the DAR should put in a garden, it would be up to us to have to maintain it. Now that could be partnering with another service organization in town or in the area to help with that. Again, our chapter needs to determine if we will pursue the project and where it would be located. That's why I suggest that Memorial Park in Harbick has a location for the Never Forget Garden that we can bring back to our chapter for consideration. I have a marked photo here of an area in Memorial Park that you might consider if you so choose. One of the recommendations for, of Never Forget Gardens, have a bench where people can see it. So this is a couple of views of it and that squiggly line is kind of the general area where I would think it would fit well. If you sit on the bench, you have to face this way, but, you know, you can almost turn your head.
So, just to review on our side, somebody can confirm or deny my understanding of that, that Memorial Park is town land, I think, right?
Yeah.
But the, the, most of the memorial stuff in there was not from the Legion, right? The American Legion?
Well, we control it.
Right. It's good to coordinate with them.
Yeah, yeah.
Our town electrician just installed new lights because the other lights aren't working. So when, if you go by at night, you can see the new lights. We split the electric bill.
Three ways.
Three ways.
With the Legion and Harvard Rescue also contributes just because, you know...
So I certainly would not, I would support, support this, but they would need coordinate, we need to coordinate a little bit to ensure everybody else is happy with it and, and find another group or maybe the Conservation Commission or somebody to push this through.
I think that the Legion, the Legion of Rescue Squad in the town all should grant permission and we should include the Conservation Commission.
So I make a motion that we grant permission to move forward to the other entities.
Second.
Alright.
I don't know if we need a motion, but...
Done deal. Already made. And second of ones.
Any other discussion?
It's pretty close to the pause place and we're supposedly, we're doing something with that.
So we're not, we're not talking about a place here. We're not talking about a place. We're not going in the weeds. We're, we're saying that as a select board, we should consider moving this forward to the entities of our town manager.
Well, I think Sherri is rightly pointing out that there's also, there's a railtrail-facing aspect right there. But I think that's on the other side.
No, not necessarily. We could discuss it for a few minutes.
Just another thing to consider.
But there's, there's a lot of lawn on that chunk.
There is.
So I think, yeah.
I think the point is more that we agree that it's a good thing to have and we're not opposed to it, but that it is a further discussion with the Legion and the Rescue Squad and the town and that right now, we don't necessarily need that further discussion, but that we agree to it and for further consideration of where it will be placed.
So does it really need like a motion or just a general consensus?
I already made the motion. Sorry, I didn't second it.
If we need it, it's there.
Yeah, I mean, the, yeah.
We, we might come back with...
Oh yeah, that's fine.
We might come back with several locations that are suitable.
Okay.
And for your, you know, consideration and approval. Yeah.
And like I said, we have to take it back to our chapter and maybe somebody else has another idea of where it was, but if anybody wants to see, this is the...
Stone.
Stone that, but it's very thin, so usually they'll put it like onto another stone or onto something else, so it's not necessarily a standalone item, but...
And you can also preemptively reach out to the Legion and talk to them about that.
Yeah, yeah. We talked to Legion and you said Conservation.
Harvard Rescue. They have interest there.
Seems like a great...
Well, the reason they split the, their interest is they split the light bill because they have the tree.
Right.
That's their interest. They don't have control over...
But one of the most controversial things that has ever happened since I've been on the select board.
About the tree. I agree that.
You should call that a tree. A tree.
I agree and I'm not, it's just very...
So, so I think, I think, is it safe to say that we all agree that, that it's a good thing as long as the location ends up being a good one?
Now, when you mentioned the railtrail, how far out does the railtrail?
I have to look at the map.
Go right away.
Because this is...
We're a long ways away from that.
Yeah, because this is sort of in line with that bench that I believe is the Legion bench.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of back.
But again, it's...
30 feet is the right way.
30 feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
No. But, and I failed to mention, I, I did graduate from Harvard Academy, I live in Craftsbury, so I, I'm local and Elaine is in Walden, you know, family, so it's family from Harvard. So it's not like we're coming in from, swooping in from nowhere, but anyway, that's how we ...
Appreciate you, yeah. Appreciate you coming. Casey, can you just, since we've traveled a little ways in our discussion, could you read back what you have for a motion?
To move forward with permission for the garden concept after discussing with the Legion and Harvard Rescue.
So that's the motion on the table. It's been seconded. We've had some discussion. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Upson has my contact information, so if there are any questions, be aware.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Be nice to, be nice to have some flowers in there. Awesome. Where are we? Three. Select board to hear from the executive director of Heartbeat Life Sharing, George McWilliams.
Yeah, good evening.
Aye.
Wanted just to start by saying thank you so much for maintaining the Town Farm Road up there.
It's quite a road.
That's our access, right? And I think it's also great in the spring. We're just so grateful for that. So thank you. I wanted to just sort of put us back in front of you, the small community, just around the corner in Hardwick, providing lives of dignity, opportunity, and community for citizens with disabilities in a cost-effective model that is fully integrated with the community. We're licensed as a therapeutic residence by the Vermont Department of Aging and Independent Living and 14 citizens with intellectual and developmental disabilities are supported in the community and in four homes that comprise usually three or four of, of what we call our friends with, usually with a family and two or three volunteers or coworkers who, who help them in the home. We're totally dedicated also to, to a kind of agricultural life. There's a farm there with a small dairy herd, a small beef herd, chickens, eggs, vegetable gardens and orchards there, so we've got a small pond and it's, it's really a beautiful life of these individuals who, who don't have a lot of opportunities elsewhere in Vermont. It's, it's a great challenge to find housing for folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities. I can talk about, this is my wife, Sherri, by the way. And we're thrilled to be in town. We did kind of swoop in from outside. I worked in the, in this field for many years in Massachusetts and came to Hardwick in September, so it's been a wonderful time to, to be here this, this last year. So, they also have opportunities to do sort of arts and crafts. We have a felting studio, we have woodwork, woodwork shop and sort of other opportunities for, for arts and crafts and so on. We also have a large hall that is just a beautiful venue that is available to the community We also have a large hall that is just a beautiful venue that is available to the community, and you can invite other organizations, concerts, musicians and things to, to have events there, which is, which is a wonderful thing. The community is part of a larger movement called Camp Hill, which is about a hundred and twenty communities worldwide of intentional communities where people, you know, choose to live both with disabilities and without disabilities and kind of in a harmonious collaborative lifestyle that kind of raises the life, you know, the quality of life for everybody. I think some of you in the town might be aware, we're, we're developing a fifth house now, which will add another three places for folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So increasing our, our offerings to the community. Maybe, maybe there will be one day a further house. I think that would probably be the end of our, of our development. And I wanted to say that we're welcome, we welcome visitors and guests anytime. So if you'd like to pay attention, we'd love to have you. So I'm so grateful to, to be in town, and I'll leave some notes for you if you want to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
So the folks that you're serving, are they, are they local folks or folks from Vermont or from all over the country?
Most of them are local, yeah. A few of them have come from out of state, but that was twenty, you know, some of them twenty years ago, so by now they're.
No, that's fine. It's just, it was a question.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for coming in without being dragged in.
Yeah. No, we actually came.
No ask. You don't have to ask or anything.
We, we just wanted to say hi. I'm relatively new, so just wanted to meet you and, and kind of open up dialogue if, if necessary.
Good job. That goes a long ways with a guy like me.
Just on a personal note, I was actually born in a Camp Hill school, serving children with developmental and intellectual disabilities in Pennsylvania. So then having a long career in between, kind of coming back and home ended up being in Vermont. So it's been wonderful for us to be here.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah.
Great. Yeah, thanks so much for coming. All right. Um, gonna move us to item four. Select Board to review and approve the loan documents for the town's line of credit with Union Bank to supplement flood repairs. And this is actually two, right?
Um, yep. So there's, um, at a previous meeting, we approved up to a renewal of twenty-five thousand. But they actually just have to separate them because some of it's sewer and some of it's general. So the total is that amount. Um, and so there's one, you know, first six hundred and seventy-five thousand for sewer and another for three hundred and fifty thousand for general. So they're identical documents, but different amounts, and it doesn't see the one million twenty-five that you previously approved. So just somebody to approve and sign the documents and.
Is it who? Do you, do you need all of us to sign? Everybody signs?
Yeah, everybody signs.
So we need a motion to approve the loan documents for the amount that Casey just read us?
Line of credit.
For a line of credit for supplemental flood repairs.
Two lines of credits, really, yeah.
Two lines of credit, okay.
All right. So that's, that's a good motion. Thank you. Any discussion on those? We've already been round on this before. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
There's two sets. Everything is marked where you sign.
Next is item five. Select Board to review and consider approving renewal documents for Heartwick Electric's line of credit at Union Bank. Uh, I did try to read through those. There are a lot of them.
So I, I feel as though my, I kind of, I thought we were being kept up to date on what's going on, but as I gossip today, it tells me we have a new interim manager. So that tells me that I'm really not being kept right up to date.
Yep.
See what I'm saying?
So things are moving.
During kind of a.
They're moving, yeah. So maybe it'll be.
I'm surprised not to see anyone here, to be honest with you.
Yeah, they usually come with a catchmore.
Well, this is unusual times, like I said, so.
Well, if there's going to be an ask, it's usually nice to have somebody to ask questions to.
Well, I don't want to just ask. I want to update what's going on.
No, no, but I mean, Kiel was saying we have, they're asking us to sign.
Yeah, that's special. Yeah, yeah, that's really special. So I guess, do you know anything?
I just wanted to start it.
I mean, I'm not going to.
I remember it's.
I understand they need, they talked about this previously.
Imagine that.
You wait your turn, Missy.
So I can just.
So it's fine. It's not about him. It's about, we haven't heard anything for a month now. On, and I think we should.
And it's, my understanding is that, my understanding is a half-time person shared with Morrisville or water and like.
Yeah, I'm just, again, it's not just that. It's like, what's going on?
Yep.
What's going down over there? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
We, one meeting, you know, show that we're parent and we forget about the kid.
Wait, which one of me is signing?
It's when I roam. Doesn't mean the kid's baby, does it?
Definitely not.
Anyway, so bringing us back into the, um, uh, the, so this is a line. They, they are also seeking a line of credit.
This is a renewal.
Yeah, they have this line.
Right. And just for operating expenses. The only thing that I would like to do is, I think it's the second thing. There's like a bunch of documents, maybe it's a resolution. I think the first paragraph of the second one said, lists the select board and the board of commissioners, and then parentheses says the legislative bodies of the town. I want to strike that legislative bodies because I don't believe that the board of commissioners is a legislative body of the town. So if we could just cross that out, then I'm good with it.
I see what you're saying. Yeah. It could be part of this decision.
It can say, the select board and the board of commissioners, but it shouldn't try to say that the board of commissioners is a legislative body.
It's not the same, right?
Well, it is, it is interesting because normally when they do that in parentheses with, um, it's almost like a here and after refer to as legislative, but they don't refer to that again. So it's not really necessary. I see what you're saying, yeah.
It's not necessary and it's misleading, I think.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't, I don't see anywhere in the rest of that document where it says it refers to legislative bodies again. Because normally it's a here and after refer to as legislative, but it doesn't refer them again, so.
No, it just refers to the borrower or something like that.
But it makes it sound like they are a legislative, we both are legislative bodies.
Well, nothing would get them to.
Of the town is the key. They're a legislative body of the department. They are. They can make decisions based on the department, but they can't, they're not a legislative body in the town.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
Well, I guarantee if we don't approve this, we'll get some information next, next time we.
I don't know. It's like, it could go either way.
I, I would like a motion to approve, if, if people, I mean, I think it's prudent for the responsible running of the lake department to have that line of credit renewed. So if people are minimal, entertain a motion to approve the documents, striking that.
We strike that, approve it, but makes, please ask for consistent updates during this transition period.
So we have this motion from Danny to approve the.
To approve it, striking the legislative body statement. Second.
And second. Any more discussions?
I just have one. No, no, I'm good. I just answered it. Okay.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. He seems like he's good.
Motion carries.
Especially with that signature.
Till we don't lose our houses.
All right. So there's going to be another thing around signing. The next is, um, item six. Select Board to consider appointing Eric Herbs, is that correct? Um, to the Heartwick Conservation Commission for four-year term ending June thirty of twenty twenty-eight.
So who?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That's the most attended board we have in the town.
Hang on. So I think four ayes.
Aye.
They're massive. Four, four. Pretty impressive.
All right. So the motion carries. That was everybody. Okay, that's good. So next, item seven. Select Board to consider appointing Lindsay Osteen as second constable. Term expires, town meeting twenty twenty-three. She agreed to do that.
Twenty twenty-five.
Who, so I do have to ask who Lindsay is and.
Oh, Lindsay's my neighbor and she is.
President of the Rescue Squad.
Yeah.
She's a full-time worker. She's the.
Why does she?
Well, she's a full-time certified law enforcement.
Level three, law enforcement officer.
So she wants to come to work for us.
No.
She wants to be the constable.
Constable.
No.
Does that mean she can give out parking tickets?
So that was my other question, not knowing this person. Why, what does being the second constable give, what's the benefit to that?
Uh, it gives us.
Why would one want to be a second constable?
Well, because the first is taken.
Yeah, that's the first doing, you know, because nowadays, I'm just curious.
That's right, yeah.
Who?
There you go.
Right. So nowadays, what, they don't do a lot, like they, they used to enforce laws back in the day.
So one of the things we're utilizing for, like I use Larry for parade. I, I don't have enough people. So I can supplement them. I've also already tasked Lindsay with helping us out with the parade.
Couple of things.
So, you know, just little things like that. Larry's also the dog officer, so, uh, just made sense.
I mean, I'm for it. I just, I'm glad somebody's doing it. I just.
Lindsay's on the fire department, president of the Rescue Squad. She's level three certified.
She is.
And she wants to help.
Then come to work for us.
I've tried.
She's also a, working on her, is she PhD right now for physical therapy? So.
Yeah, she's smarter than, no offense, but she's.
All right.
No.
She's smarter than a cop. She's smarter than a cop.
I'd like to make the motion to appoint Lindsay Osteen as the second const, the second constable. Term expiring, town meeting twenty twenty-five.
Second.
More discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, uh, item eight. Select Board to discuss and consider approving F Y twenty-five water and sewer fund budgets, which are in our packet now towards the back, right? We get towards the back?
They're like in the middle.
Oh, yeah, because there's a cemetery. All right. So.
Documents.
Yeah.
Sorry, just give me a second. I'd just like to get it up on the screen.
Oh, great idea.
Eric, do you still want Casey's doing that, but if we talk about the process for water and sewer rates?
So this is not rates. This is just the budget.
This is just expenses, just expenses.
Yeah.
And we'll separate like by September to make the expenses.
Yep. So we're just looking at the budget now, and then we have a separate discussion about rates.
Because, right, we need to have the expense budget in place for July first.
And then we'll use the expense budget.
First quarter billing comes out September thirtieth to get our rates in place. That gives us.
So, so we'll pass a budget, and then once we have a budget, then we can figure out what the rates need to be to raise that. Which I had forgotten, so I had to email.
Oh, I don't even want to ask this question, but.
There you go.
What the guy?
Okay, I'd like to start with water because that's always the easier one.
Go from clean to dirty.
Yeah. Okay. So.
Follow it all the way through.
Water budget is relatively flat. Um, I am electing to, we're proposing to reduce the capital fund transfer by a little bit because it has a relatively healthy, um, capital fund right now, about over seven hundred thousand we have in capital. And because the fact that most people have water and sewer, and sewer, um, has much larger increase because we'll talk about why, um, really like to keep the water fairly level if we can, just because, um, our rate payers.
So the only problem I would have with reducing that is we need to get the meters in, period. We need to spend the money, hire a contractor, get the meters in.
We ordered twelve.
We need sixty, last I knew.
And eighty.
Yeah.
So what?
It's all, it's mobile homes. It's all.
Yeah, I got it.
The question is, why not, if we've got money in the bank and we got a need, why aren't we?
Why haven't we done it?
Why don't we hire somebody to do it?
When did we put the meters in? Five years ago?
No, like more, like nine years ago.
So.
We also talk about it every year.
Yeah, it's time.
Yeah.
I mean, so first of all, for, for many of us that are paying, we may be overpaying. And that, and that's not fair.
Right. I totally agree.
It means you're off the meter.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, they also.
That's pretty much guaranteed. A single old person is paying more than they should, guaranteed.
Well, we know that because the water rates are higher if you're off the meter.
Right. So.
Right.
When you give the meters.
Hence my point. And I don't know if that means we can't take it out or not. Money's in there, right?
No, it's just, all I'm saying is like setting aside forty thousand instead of fifty thousand this year because we already have a healthy fund balance. It's like completely sort of different discussion about, yes, we absolutely need to put out in our F P.
But that money's already in there, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, uh, yes, absolutely.
So that's part of what's, the seven hundred thousand is already there, so we don't need to make it more.
Yes, we have a chunk for.
Right. So we can still take it out.
Then we're still putting in forty thousand.
Right. Yeah, that's fine.
I just, I, like I said, I really want to keep this one really level because sewer is not.
I just wanted to make sure we were not jeopardized in getting that done in the next ninety days because it's be snowing.
Why do we have a eighteen percent increase in?
Because it, you take, because this, the water and sewer funds pay a percentage to office for the work, the time.
Oh, it's the office here.
The inter-fund transfers, so the salaries and benefits associated with that, with the office.
Got it.
Translates to here. It's all formula-based. It's like, I don't know.
Okay, no, I'm with you.
Ten, fourteen, fourteen percent is what I think it is, something like that. A certain percentage of, I don't know off the top of my head.
Is the same thing, the next line?
Correct, same thing.
Transfer.
Because when our salary and benefits goes up, it affects them because these funds pay funds to the general for the time that the staff spends on the enterprise funds.
Got it. Thank you.
It's not just Kenny's, and it's not just the water operators, everything associated with running that.
Yeah.
And we've, we've actually ratcheted that down. It used to be somewhere around twenty percent, we did. And now, um, I think it's around fourteen-ish percent, um, of time, you know, the cost. So yes, that's where that comes from. So in this scenario, because of that increase, I was thinking we'd reduce the capital a little bit because the capital's pretty healthy, and it'd be just a five thousand dollar increase, one point six two percent in this way. Like just for the water.
Okay. Good. Show us that.
Okay, and then let's do the water capital. Just take a quick look at that.
Do we, I know we've probably, I don't want to, we don't need to like delve into this conversation too much, Casey, but do we have any, uh, like projected dates for replacement for some of these? Like, for example, the reservoir roof replacement, are we assuming that's going to be?
Far out because.
Forty years from now?
It's a sixteen thousand.
Yeah, it's, it's only a few years old, so we kind of, um, figured we could take a couple of years off from that. Yeah, it should be like thirty something years from now. Yeah. Um, so.
Didn't we do a concrete roof on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Should last quite a while.
Yeah. So, yeah, thirty to forty years, right? So, um, so this is, and in this scenario, I have the capital just going up three thousand dollars a year over the next three years.
Okay.
Um, so that's, that's what we're looking at here. This is roughly what we set aside here. So like.
In general, for the water side, we don't have, I mean, we've already talked about needing the new meters, but we don't, the things that actually happen on a fairly regular basis, there are kind of capital things, there are well refurbishment, right? Happens on a schedule.
Every five, I think, yeah.
And what else? Capital replacement, I guess, may have, I don't know.
We've got some, the, the main coming up Woke Street is a project in the future that needs to happen.
Project in the making?
The water main.
Really?
Yeah, it's original.
Cool.
So does that fall into where these capital items?
Line upgrades.
Yeah, good.
Line upgrades and meters are the same line, but.
That's probably going to be an expensive project.
But, no, we can move stuff around. I mean.
So we.
Okay.
So we bought a new pickup and we still have twenty thousand dollars in the.
Truck.
In the truck account?
No, actually, because, um, well, that balance has gone down because we just bought the truck like two weeks ago and actually. So probably should be a little less than that because we just paid for the truck. So it's actually pretty much.
My suggestion was that we put water, first of all, it needs a decal on it because otherwise, when Kenny's out reading meters, he's just a dirty old man in a Ford Ranger sitting in front of my house. Quote, yes, fact. You know, you want people to recognize it. But I also think it'd be a great idea that people could recognize it as a water and sewer expense truck, not a highway maintenance truck. I think it's important to show people that it's the, well, you know, I. I think it's important to show people that it's the, well, you know, other towns.
We had a decal on the Dodge, but it was just like, it says hard, but public works.
Well, that's fine, but on the front fender.
We'll stick to the.
The, no, Magnus phone, but get, break down.
Yeah, we're gonna get a big, great big.
And on the front, on the back, rip, but.
Operator of the year.
Super senior, sewer super senior, operator of the year, twenty three.
You're already on it.
Should I just kind of cast?
It's already on it.
No, you know what I'm saying, we do use that to go around about creep around and read electronic meters, which are, it rubs people around a lot sometimes. You're doing that, Eric.
So any other questions about the capital?
No.
Nope, that's good as you were.
Okay, here it is, I have to take a second here to get these. Well, actually, in each here at first, for here, it will be there.
And that's just thought about, a big old negative number. Some of these numbers are weird, you got.
We'll get to it, right?
Okay. So I've got a couple of things in yellow that I just want to talk about, because I'm not super pleased with this number right now. A nine point three percent increase, but the reality is, is it has nothing to do with the bond, because we've been planning for that for the last three years. So the bond really hasn't changed, because in the last two budgets, we had a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand either put into capital or planned for the bond, and because the project didn't get done, we put it in capital instead, so it has nothing to do with the bond. Our driving factors for this large increase are a couple of things. One, mostly being processed chemicals, I should have, wish I had.
So Casey, just to set, when you say that the, the increase has nothing to do with the bond yet, the prior year budget was zero.
Because we had, but capital fund transfer was a hundred and forty.
No.
It's just shifted categories, so it really doesn't have anything to do with it, and the year before that, it was a hundred and thirty, so.
Yeah, I see.
So the bond isn't what is driving this.
Gotcha.
Yeah, processed chemicals, I've talked with, we've talked this a little bit. So we were running off one lagoon, this is not, you're, we better explain this, so we were running off one lagoon for most of fiscal year twenty four, which, tell them what that does.
It's a shortened process, so the, where we have.
Had to give it more juice.
We have a thirty day detention time for the process, and running off of one lagoon is cuts it in half. So we need to inject more chemicals to precipitate the phosphorus out of the water, so we have to add more chemicals. And the price chemicals went up, and we've increased our dosage, so we need to be permanent.
So literally, in the current fiscal year, we have, we budgeted thirty six, which was a, we were a little bit heavier before. But we have spent probably like sixty four thousand.
So.
And so.
In the length of time that we were running off of one lagoon wasn't planned.
Right.
So, right, but, so that money, so what we've done is we've already spent in the fiscal year we're in.
Yeah.
But we have two lagoons coming in this fiscal budget.
Correct.
So, that's what I'm saying, we hopefully don't spend sixty again, but we, that, we need to figure out what that number should look like, I guess, in our discussions.
I think.
That's a huge increase, twenty four thousand dollars, that's.
Yeah, with the anaerobic reactor cell going back online, that, that lagoon one was completely taken offline. And, and that first cell, the first cell lagoon one, the anaerobic reactor cell, is supposed to take the majority of the phosphorus out of the water, so. I, I think we could safely move that number down, although the price of chemicals have gone up.
Right, but we, so we should be using the same amount as we were previous, correct?
We shouldn't be, no.
No, what we used previous to the one lagoon, we had two lagoons?
Correct.
That's the number with the price increase, that's the.
So should it be like forty five?
I think we should move it to, put it at forty five.
Forty five.
Right, that's what.
Oh, they've done it that much?
Yeah.
And, and then, you know, we still have to make sure.
And they've limited some of the, the, some of the, the components to the, what do you, the, the compounds, like those are harder to get.
So I also, so is this not exactly budget, but related to using more chemicals to precipitate phosphorus, doesn't that create more sludge?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, I mean, we, we need to make the sludge, we need to make solids in the water or we violate.
Yeah, yeah, it's just like, it's bad that we were in that situation that long, because that's.
Well, what we need is a freak, more frequent sludge cleanup.
Well, that was a result of the flood, right?
No.
No, well, it was the length of the project.
Oh, yes.
Yes, that's right.
Yes, it was delayed.
And you're, you're reflecting, you're reflecting that in the capital, we haven't gotten there yet, but. Like, we're, we're saving more for sludge disposal.
How do we have?
It's really all we're saving for right now.
So how do we have two hundred and sixty thousand and then when we just?
Wait, is everybody jumping to capital?
Yeah, we're not here yet.
But it's part of this, it's a part of this discussion, because if we, if we're producing more sludge, then we're.
Let's wait till we get to capital.
The, I mean, the capital is going to be something we need to discuss, because right now, I only put ten thousand dollars in, because.
Yeah.
It was not a, it was a really high number, so I only put a little bit. Plant electricity, we have to talk about, and I'm sure, because we spent forty five thousand in fiscal year twenty three, but I think some of that was related to the project.
Lagoon cleanup.
Lagoon cleanup, so. I'm just not sure that, I don't know if we, we might be able to play with that a little bit. I don't know if it'll be forty five, I, I was thinking thirty five, I don't know. And then, so yeah, those are, I guess, the only real flexibility we have right now. Because as you can see, I mean, I pretty much nickel and dime every single category, like two hundred dollars here, three, like, didn't.
The, the electricity was eighteen thousand?
Right, but that go builds the project, not here, so.
Okay.
Yeah, the ton power for that, yeah.
But the rate did go up.
Yeah, it did.
But shouldn't we have more efficient equipment in there?
Well, that's the thing is, I just, I'm not even sure.
Yeah, B F D, software, so.
So we should see a slight decrease in our usage.
Uh, that, that Mer project actually did an energy audit, always, they're working on it, so that's going to be good information.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess I just, I, it's great that we're going to have, it's going to be more energy efficient, but I also don't want to put us in a position where we're overspending our budget.
Well.
You know, I just, can we, one question is, do we have to pass this tonight, or can we look back at, like, can we figure out what our electricity, what's more realistic?
Well, we don't know yet, because we aren't back up to, the plant hasn't backed up to running.
Well, so.
It's kind of difficult.
Forty five is what we spent fiscal year twenty three, year to date this year, with probably like two more bills to go, because the way it runs, they're like the fifteenth and fifteenth, so probably. Only have data through like April fifteenth, or, yeah, maybe May fifteenth. I think we were at like thirty three, so we're, we're probably going to be fairly close to what we expected here.
I think thirty five is a good number, because the, the equipment is new now, and it's more energy efficient.
And I don't think it'd be over just, that's not one I think it will be.
It should be way over. Right.
And we're a little heavy on our chemicals, hopefully, because once we get that smooth run, thin on, too. I mean, that's, that's the hope, right? Once we get it all back up and all new and all running, we should be, and more energy efficient, more efficient running. More sludge, because we'll be late to make it, but that's not our decision, that's the state of the laws decision.
So Casey, do you happen to know, so I'm here, we only go back two years, but on the, the capital fund transfer. Do you know, so the last two years were just, were because we were anticipating the bond payment, but what did we put in there before that?
Um, yeah, off the top of my head.
Does ten thousand seem really skinny?
It is, it absolutely is, and that's why I want to discuss it, but everything else is pretty much new, so in, in the capital plan, it's basically for stage, that, that's it right now, because. Capital set aside is what's really going to set.
So are we in the capital?
Is going to drive this way up, so.
So let's go capital, everybody wants to go capital.
Capital, let's go to capital.
Did we do two things, I have to share the screen first, and.
So this doesn't show us what we put aside last year, we didn't put anything aside for any of these things, we had to, because they got balances. See what I'm saying? Like, where's twenty three, yeah, actually, whatever, the, well, that's a cumulative.
It's on the, to other budget.
For what we put.
What we put.
This doesn't show the past, what we put in.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
That's what you just asked, Eric, right, with the.
Oh, I see, because she only put ten thousand on, because that's all we're putting in.
Yeah.
So we don't know what was put in in twenty four.
Well, a hundred and forty was put in, because that was what was on the other page.
Right, but it doesn't show that we put twenty five thousand in manhole.
Well, you put, right, so in fiscal year twenty three, we put a hundred and thirty, and then the burn fiscal year, a hundred and forty. And now in fiscal year twenty five, we'll actually have a bond payment, so that just shifts to bond payment, a hundred and forty to bond. That's why I only did ten to capital, because it's going to be a huge increase if we do more than that.
I think maybe what Danny was asking was this capital doesn't show.
So now we.
With how that hundred and forty from last year was allocated.
So we used to put a hundred and thirty in across all of these items. And now we've converted that into a hundred and thirty bond payments, so we don't have any money to put into any of these other things?
That's exactly what we're looking at.
That's not.
Hold on, hold on, the new boiler, so for example, the new boiler was replaced in the project.
It's because most of these things were part of the project, that's why we're not going to allocate for them right now.
Was replaced in the project.
So the only thing.
Irritation system was replaced in the project.
This is to my point, that I'm trying to grasp, and this may be just me, is, so these amounts are leftover balances with a new, new car, everything's fixed.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's good news, so we're starting at zero, and this is what we have for future, so that's really good, I understand that.
Yeah.
The two sixty, eighty, 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 eighty eight for sludge. Uh, why, I mean, I know that the sludge removal we just did was three times as expensive as it was supposed to be.
One point two nine.
So we didn't have to spend any of our two hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
We did spend a little bit of our sewer capital.
Because we were struggling terrible to find that money.
For sludge.
And we had it.
We used it.
We used some of that, we used like four hundred and fifty thousand of our capital for the project.
So that two hundred and sixty.
It's because last year, when you guys did the capital plan, we shifted some money from some of these categories that had higher balances, and we knew that they were going to be replaced in the project. We shifted some of the money into sludge disposal, because we knew that was going to be the, the next need in like five years from now.
So I guess the only thing that I think that we should. We should take it a real hard look at is, if, if, we know that that's going to be well over half a million dollars.
What?
Sludge removal.
Or are you thinking?
When, when you, when you, since, like, when do you expect the next sludge clean out?
That's a good question, man.
It, it would be, I mean, do, do we do what we historically have done, is let it go forty years and clean it out?
Doesn't seem like we need to do that.
So.
I don't think we can do that in Danny's world.
Right, so. I would say you're going to do a little bit each year, I just don't know how much, we don't have any equipment or system.
I mean, we don't need to answer it tonight, because we don't have any extra money, but.
Yeah.
We need to figure that out, because.
I think that is a question that we're trying to get answered in this redesign and rebuild.
Because you see what I'm saying, if it costs us two million dollars, or a sludge in ten years, we've only got half a million, we're, I mean, we can only do what we can do, but it does, those numbers. I, I don't, I don't, we're not, I don't see this budget anything but going up in the future.
Right.
Big time.
I agree.
I don't see any way without, I mean, hopefully, everything runs really smooth for twenty five years.
Um, I think.
A ten thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars a year capital fund transfers.
No, it's, it's not ideal, but the problem is, is that because of all these other things, I mean.
With that, it's bottom line.
We're going to kill the rate payers, we're just going to like.
What we need to.
Well, we can't run the plant for free.
Yeah, but the way we, the way we, we decide the rates is that we're not necessarily going to slap eight percent on everybody equally, we, that's a whole other process. So if we're adjusting the budget tonight, then it's up to us to figure out an equitable, an equitable way for the rates to work. It's different, I think it's different than the way we do our town meeting budget, because we can have that conversation about split, like. So I, I think Danny's totally right, that, and we also just took, we changed something, I, nine percent is like really high, but I just don't think, I don't know if ten's enough.
Good.
I'm more worried about the twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight numbers.
Me too, because those are going to have to, this year, you could do it for one year, but.
So, the, with, the thing with the wastewater plant is, I'm hoping that we're going to have a similar process, the same equipment. And the same expenses from here on out. But what their, what FEMA, what the state of the mod is going to allow us to do on this rebuild is going to dictate what we do. What we need to be careful with is signing up for some new process with a bunch of bells and whistles.
Right.
And then it'll drive our energy costs up, it'll drive our equipment costs up, so, so I think that there's a lot of questions right now around the wastewater plant. And where we're going to be at, I'd like to keep it the way it is and just go a bit higher. Because the process is the, the most, is the oldest process, and it's the most cost effective.
Proven.
There's, there's a, three pumps that lift the water to the lagoons, and the rest is gravity.
So.
Is, is the hope that, that this year is going to kind of regulate where we spend less on the processing chemicals and on the electricity?
Well, we're back up to.
Two percent.
Capacity.
Right, but so ideally, in, over the next years, we could allocate some of those extra funds to the sludge removal, or is that not?
I don't think, no.
There are no extra funds.
Because the cost of the chemicals, even though we're, they're, they're going to come back down to the pre-flood level, or the pre-project level, but the cost of the chemicals has done up. So it's actually increasing in the electricity, while we're saving some, so we're using a little bit less for the cost of those, which has all, yes.
Right, and we know all these things, even though they don't need to be replaced in the next five years, certain, some of these things are going to need to be addressed within five years.
Well, we also do slip lining periodically, right?
That's what I'm saying, there's things that, that we're going to have to do.
And there's a truck, part of the truck gets made for it here.
The grit removal system is going to need to be replaced, but.
Our lift stations are, are all getting old.
The lift stations are going to have to be replaced, but hopefully that's going to be.
So anyway, for, for, I have no problem with leaving it low right now for this year, but.
They got repaired, so.
Based on the unknowns.
They got flooded, repaired.
So it's not all new.
I just.
They actually put them lower, because they needed more wire, you know.
So we can, I'm, I'm fine with keeping it low this year, I think it's important, but I also, what I, I would be hesitant about the same issue we came up with our budget this year, our town budget. Which is if we, you know, we can't guarantee that next year or the year after, it's going to be actually nine percent. You're like, so I just, I think we need to be realistic about what, like, if we know we have to remove the grit removal system, that should be in our estimated cost line. Like, we need to fill in the estimate, that we, I, I think, not tonight, we need to really look at this, these capital costs and when they're coming, and if we're. You know, for this year, we can prove that ten thousand dollars for capital, but it sounds like, from what I'm hearing, that it should be more in FY twenty six, twenty nine, twenty eight, so. Like, that doesn't have to do with tonight, but I think we need to look into.
Well, no, we can, like, I can do something like fifteen, twenty, twenty five, like, start going up five thousand a year.
I think it needs to go ten, twenty, thirty, forty.
Yes, yeah, I'm nervous as hell with.
That's pretty small still.
This stuff is, I mean, I, I don't know life expectancy of some of this stuff, but, you know, the, the cover or the liner, so. What's a liner cost, what's that liner project cost, I mean, I, so we're coming into times where.
Three hundred thousand.
Right.
Right.
Harvest transitions in our time here, on this board, three of us at least, transitioned from basically solely being a capital fund-funded operation. And, that, those days are gone. Having the money in, in the fund to buy and build things, really, it doesn't happen in today's world.
We're still doing it with a lot of stuff, though.
I think we're better than those, but...
I, I know, I know we are, yeah, only because we add that fund, we work so hard to get it. The point being is going forward, when this, in thirty years from today, when you have to put a new sewer plant in, it's going to be a billion dollars, you see what I'm saying, so...
We're going to have to borrow for that.
We're going to be...
We can't save enough to be able to class...
Thank you, that's what I was trying to spit out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We go on, or is it save enough to operate in today's world, so... Not tonight, but maybe as when we're doing our budgeting, maybe our old style, you know, our styles, maybe it's not right, I don't know. I, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, but budgeting is different today than it was ten, fifteen years ago when we started, when we were always banking money to, to purchase things for the town.
It's, it's the whole idea of, um, correct me if I'm wrong in this, but the, the, the powers that be say that we should be borrowing money to pay for capital improvements, so that the generation using...
Right.
The, the asset is paying for it at the time of using, so, right now, the way banking money and saving it for future cares, the burden is on the taxpayer today, rather than the tax, and then the taxpayer twenty years doesn't have any tax liability.
But that's the way the American, everything was built, people started businesses so they could give them to their kids.
But we had...
But if you have to borrow every time, then it's the same thing. So if we already took a bond out, then we are currently in real time paying for that current project, and then we're going to be paying for that bond for thirty years, and then it's the next bond for thirty years.
Well, that's, I agree.
So it's a mix, I think, I think we need to mix, I think we need to have a, a balance of that.
So, all right, I just wanted, I wanted, so, we, I feel like this is wide ranging about how we approach budgeting in general, I want to just kind of bring us back in, we're going to, we're looking at water and sewer budgets, and how do people feel about where we're at, with, so the water, we didn't, everybody was good with the water, right?
The only thing I would like to see in the sewer fund is the estimated costs of things like the grit removal system that we know we're going to have to replace, like, OP just said, we know we're going to have to replace that at some point in the near-ish future. So even if, even if we have enough saved, that's totally cool, but just seeing it in the estimated cost.
Yeah, I think some of that is something we can...
That could be for next year.
Well, the grit removal system is going to have to be, that, the whole, that whole system is going to have to be redesigned. So I don't, I don't think we can reject the cost.
And, but our conversation we just barely had tells me that we have a hundred and thirty thousand dollar bond payment for that plant down there. So we're already putting, in that bond payment, we're putting away for the future, because we're paying for it in the future. See what I'm saying? We're already paying.
We're paying for work that was done over the last year.
We're paying for equipment, yeah, I see where you're going with this, so we're, we're paying for equipment, that, we're also saving for replacement equipment.
Right, right, we're doing two, two things at once, just like, we had this discussion about the grater and the lease payment, where we're putting away money for the grater, the esgrater.
We're double paying.
And we're doing the same thing here. If, if you're telling us we have a, uh, whatever, a blue Chevy that's going to have a thirty-year life expectancy, we need to know the maintenance cost for that thirty years, not the replacement cost, because we know we cannot save enough to buy a new Chevy in thirty years. We're going to have to borrow the money for that new Chevy, no doubt about it. Because we're kidding ourselves if we think we're going to set an upside to do the sludge removal when it's going to be a couple of million dollars when we do it.
Unless we can move it every year.
So we can't pay for what we did, because we did it already, that's why we borrowed the money. And we have a life expectancy, that investment carries that life expectancy of the capital investment. The maintenance is something that we have to budget for. But we know we can't budget enough money to buy a new sewer plant.
Or whatever, yeah.
So...
I would say, just kind of glancing at...
A lot.
So just glancing at this capital, um, budget, though, I think, I mean, what you're saying is just recognizing that we borrowed this time for the upgrade, we're going to borrow next time, so there's no need to save for like the anaerobic cover, because we just replaced it, we borrowed, so we're going to borrow next time. The only time you wouldn't, you would change that is if, like, with the fire trucks where we decided to shift from borrowing to saving. So there's a period where you have bond payment and you're putting money away for the next truck. So, whatever.
I mean, if you could do that.
But that's what we're kind of doing here, but I guess where I, when I just glance at this, I think if we just recognize that some of these things have been replaced with a bond, they're going to be replaced by borrowing next time, and we just zero out some of these lines, that might, that might zero out the negative in the plant upgrades line.
Well, some of the reason that shows negative, though, is because there's like a spreadsheet, and we pay all of like Nickley and Chase, and Eldridge and Elliott, we may not have gotten reimbursed from that yet. So this is a snapshot in time, like, on the day that I did this, that was the balance and that, but it's probably because we don't, we have reimbursements we haven't received.
So we should be at zero when this all shakes out, or relative.
In that category.
Okay, so we're not...
It will be very negative, like thirty thousand, I think, maybe.
In what category?
Plant upgrades.
Oh.
Because all, everything related to the project is paid, yeah, gets paid out of there, and there's definitely stuff we haven't reimbursed for, because I can only submit when it's not for recognition.
God, that is good news, that's the first piece of good news you brought us for these budgets.
So, does that... So that's, is that the current balance, the total balance, does that affect that number, though?
The total at the bottom, yeah.
I mean, that number, if you...
Right, because if this was, say, oh, if that was, if that was zero, then the bottom, yeah.
So things aren't as grim as they first, as they first appeared?
No, no.
Okay, good. So...
Because I, when I do this, I literally take it exactly from the spreadsheet, but again, there's stuff that hasn't been reimbursed, so...
So do we want to, are, are people okay, I mean, it seems like the, the biggest discussion here is how we budget in general going forward, but, um...
Yeah.
And, you know, we are discussing a budget, so I think it's appropriate, but, um, to, do we think that this budget, as, as we're looking at it as presented, is going to be okay for this year?
That's, I think this budget is okay for this year, given a whole bunch of moving parts, and there's...
Because stuff is going to shake out, I think next year we'll maybe have a little better idea on some of these things, like our electricity usage and our chemical...
I mean, the one thing we have on our side is, we should not have any huge capital costs on that plant for some time.
And we still have a pretty healthy balance, I think.
Right, so that's, that, that actually is six hundred something bucks, seven hundred thousand bucks.
Yeah, I think that's pretty healthy.
We're, we're not, that makes, that makes me feel a lot better.
I mean, my only question about that is if we feel like it's healthy, and we feel like we're not going to have any big improvements, can we pull from it to get the cost down for taxpayers?
I don't, I don't like that.
Are you saying pull from capital to offset some of the operating costs?
That's what we did for water.
But that's what Casey's already, like, that it's down to ten thousand to the cap, that's pretty skinny.
So I was going to say, it's ten thousand.
How much does a little slip lining cost? A lot, I think.
Seventy thousand, I think.
Yeah, and that's just doing a little...
And if you look at the number, and I think it's important, that number being almost seven hundred thousand dollars at the bottom, is our balance, and our estimated cost for projects, uh, future projects is only one point one, so, you know, and that, if you're going to look at this budget, in this capital budget, that's not, that's not really...
It's not terrible.
It's, no, not at all, especially when we have no capital projects planned for the next five years.
That's what I'm saying.
And, you know what I'm saying, so, uh, this year we have the flexibility to, to, to leave it where it is, let things shake out, let our plant get back online, let our reimbursements for all these upgrades get completed, see what our electricity cost is going to be, and make some hard decisions on the budget, and maybe even the way we structure our capital fund next year.
Yeah, yeah, so can you...
That's a motion, by the way.
So, but Casey's got the, um...
So if we take the ten thousand...
So capital plan, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, is what we're going to change it to from what was originally presented.
Which doesn't really change the budget, I guess.
Um, and then the actual, the sewer budget, um, we reduced processed chemicals from sixty to forty-five was really the only change, which brought it from nine point three to six point four two.
All right, so...
Um, I, I'd really like to see them as two separate motions, because it seems like water is going to be as presented, and sewer will make changes.
I can motion to approve the FY twenty-five water fund, fund budget as presented.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next motion needs to be...
Would be for the six point four two, the thirty-three thousand for this, and then changing the capital amounts to be ten, twenty, thirty, forty, is what I'd like to see.
Then we want the motion to be the, for five hundred fifty-three thousand two hundred seventy-seven.
Yeah, yeah, if that's fine, sure.
Subводs. Second one.
And just more discussion on sewer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you for the lively discussion and the budgeting.
Very old budgeting.
Can I just, uh, recap that we're, so it sounds like we're committing to upgrading twelve, like, adding twelve meters, that's in this current...
Yeah.
That's what OP said?
Unless we get somebody outside to do it, that's not going to happen.
Yes, we do need to get somebody outside to do it, right?
Yeah.
So do we need to have a discussion about that?
Not now.
Okay.
Yep.
That's in our...
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I have a very good idea.
Okay, I just don't want to forget.
OP's crap.
It's on the word downstairs, too.
Okay, so, next, item nine, select board to consider approving the revised cemetery policy to include Main Street preview of Maple Street.
Are those the only revisions?
Which we have in review is the first paragraph, the select works versus the cemetery commission, it used to say like for section for professionals, now it's for all of them, and then I just changed like the font and a little bit of formatting to make it look a little friendlier, that's literally the only content change.
Motion to approve the revised cemetery policy include Main Street preview of Main Street Cemetery.
Second one. Uh, comment, discussion?
So we have a while now, there, there's no, okay.
Well, we don't have the, the only, there's the Catholic standard part of it, but the other, all of here.
Good, I'm happy with that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, next. Item ten, select board to review and consider accepting the bid proposal from Complete Demolition Services, Service LLC for the flood-resilient communities fund projects, and authorize the town manager to execute contact, so, um...
Let your phone down.
I don't have any questions.
Teenagers, teenagers.
Uh, so, we don't have the, we've got the two bids, that's correct, they're not in here, um...
I think, they're in the folder, they're in the folder.
So I, can you...
I have them all, yeah. Do you want further, is that what you said?
Well, no, I'm very confused as to total project cost, I see individual project cost, I can't, I can't figure those out, but I did not see...
It was broken up and given later.
So the words excavation concrete.
He broke it up, for, he had too many, um, too many...
This is total.
Right, you said that.
This is the, this is...
He would do the whole thing.
This is...
Yep.
So...
Okay.
All right, and then the next one is the complete demolition, I'll see whatever that is, complete demolition service.
He would see.
So, this was a quick turnaround between site visit and, and presentation of the, the, of the bid.
He's got the numbers.
I got some of them.
So he started out, like, this one was a sheet for two oh nine School Street, and he has a total of three eight fifty, and then goes on for, the next one is...
Cherry Road.
I can't, Cherry Road, okay, and that one twenty-four, that amount, then it's, um...
Craft River.
That amount, and then that again, this right here, Mel Street, that's the big one.
Two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
That's the...
That's the asbestos, because the asbestos is in the ground, that is, probably ground.
And from here to Lake Champlain.
Yeah. Give the rest of the question.
I'm impressed with it so far.
So, um, and this, uh, reminds us about how this gets paid for, this is part of the whole...
This is the flood-resilient communities program grant, so it's completely immune, we have to pay for it, but we get reimbursed, it's monthly, so it's, the reimbursement's turned out. And this actually took us over the amount, and he just amended us and gave us the extra money.
Okay, so it's all for...
There's no match.
Well, you're certainly going to eat rough. I said you're certainly going to eat rough.
He's going to sub contract with All Metals.
Somebody's going to eat rough. A whole bunch of them.
Danny, we had nine companies there, and this is the only complete...
Yeah, I, I just, all the arguments are not going to make me feel good about this.
Okay.
So...
We need to get the, we need to get the...
How many contractors, how many contractors did we have from Hardwick?
We had, um...
I don't, that doesn't matter, we got what we got.
I actually, I want to know.
Oh, you mean at the meeting?
Yeah, how many?
People came and looked at it.
How many contractors did we have from Hardwick?
Um...
None.
I bet we get more than that.
I think so, we should have.
I do.
One, one contractor from Hardwick, to do this one.
No, we only have two, two, are you considering?
All metals. Okay, you didn't submit a bid.
It's not about...
So, the gravel, gravel's not, gravel can't tip.
It's not, it's not, yeah, that's not really, I don't know, it's, again, that's not helping.
I would like to see, like, for example, this water meter project. I would like to see people from this area submit a bid to do that, those projects.
Well, we, so, to my point, you're not going to get people to submit bids for projects like that when you have these type of projects that are astronomically profitable out there. Why would you want to come to work for the town of Hardwick and, and be fair enough, you're wages, so, it is what it is, I'll give you all that, it is what it is.
Can I, can I just give you one other piece of information, though? He, this is highly specialized because of the asbestos.
Yeah.
I, I think we would have received lots of other bids, and they would maybe have been more competitive in your mind, if there was no asbestos. It's the asbestos remediation, the guy knows, I mean, I, I haven't had to ask, everything that I need has happened, and it's all permitted, we're probably going to be checked by EPA, I want to make sure this is done right. And I'm impressed, and I'm, I think this is a good, good match for this, and I, I know what you're looking at, so...
And it gets reimbursed, right?
It's, it's nothing out of the...
Free money.
Is, is money out of your other pocket, too?
Yes, it's out of your other pocket.
We're still paying for it.
It's not out of your proper tax pocket, it's out of your income tax pocket, yeah.
We can, we can reject the bid, and we go back up to this, we could.
I don't know. No, I'm the law, I'm the only one that seems to have any concern, so it's not worth...
Well, I just feel like everything costs an awful lot lately, so I guess that's why I wasn't...
So I will make a motion to accept a bid proposal from the Complete Demolition, Demolition Service LLC for the FR CF projects, and authorize the town manager to...
So what's the total amount of the project, yes?
Three hundred and ten and nine and seven, or something, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I can second that.
Do we have more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Doesn't have to be a nay, so...
Does not, all opposed, and, and nay, but the ayes have it, so motion carries, thank you.
And then Sherri, uh, Kristen is going to be the clerk of the works to make sure the works all went correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, there we go.
Danny, you vote with no?
Yes.
You're going to give me a hard hat, though.
He voted nay, you can have my hard hat.
Yeah, okay, I was going to ask one.
I got the factory best, where you have the dress.
I got the best.
I mean, the stuff needs a bad taste in my mouth, too, it's absolutely ridiculous.
I just made it up.
They could bury all the concrete on our property, but then... They could bury all the concrete on our property, but then we'd have to dig it up in twenty years and pay us, and pay the disposal guy.
Twenty years is gonna cost more than that.
Right.
And like, you know, unfortunately, the majority of the asbestos is not.
No, that's, that's Danny, that's the problem. Danny?
What's that?
Oh, that, that parking lot, it's all mixed in with the parking lot.
Hey, I know a guy that can haul dirty dirt.
Well, maybe he's hauling for this guy. This guy subcontracted another group.
Give him a car.
Another party too.
Calling. Alright, next, item eleven, uh, cemetery.
Oh.
Some of all, all the way. Um, item eleven, select board to approve and sign the FY twenty-five Lemoyle County Sheriff's Department Dispatch Contract. Um, this is for fire and police. And we pretty much always contract with Lemoyle County sheriffs. They're the only ones who provide this service in our area.
Yeah, we have some of the best service too. They provide some of the best service.
Oh, so that's good to hear. Excellent.
Yeah, no, they've always, uh.
Good.
I can motion to approve the FY twenty-five Lemoyle County Sheriff's Department Dispatch. Do you want to have it be signed?
Could you?
You all have to sign?
Okay.
And can you include the total amount in your motion?
In the.
An amount of forty-four thousand.
In the total amount of forty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and six cents.
Second.
Great, my second. Any comments or questions about Rogers' proposal? Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next, um, select board reports, new business or old business?
So the foundation for the addition of the townhouse is in?
Really?
Yep. Nice. Got our first bill? Yeah.
Great.
So it's great. Moving on.
Do we own business or do we go by that?
We're, they're all together. Go ahead.
I just wanna give a really quick shout out to, um, Eric Stevens has been redoing, uh, the old Hunt House in East Harvick. He got a historic preservation.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Grant, um, because East Harvick is a designated village center and if anybody hasn't driven by it, uh, Star Construction's doing a really, really amazing job. It's a, it's a cool project.
Is that the one that makes it, Peters?
Right across from the.
What did you call that? I'm sorry?
It's, we call it the old Hunt House.
Oh, okay.
I heard Holden House.
Sixty-seven Main Street, I believe is the address. The Hunt family owned it for a long time.
Where are you folks at with the removal of the bridge on Ford River?
You're looking at me?
Ford River.
You guys are the ones that decided to take it out.
Trucking Park by Farms Row.
Yeah.
It's on the trucking note.
Harvick Farms.
Yeah, it's not Ford River.
I just needed to walk around.
Yes.
Opie was talking with the, uh, Harvick Farms.
We, there's no plan, we don't have a timeline at this point. I've been communicating with Reno to us regarding some alternatives for when we pull the bridge, uh, putting some hardwood timbers down, uh, to span the concrete deck and remove the gravel, the two feet of gravel that's on the concrete deck. But there's a considerable about a cracking underneath and it's, it doesn't look good underneath the bridge. It really doesn't.
So you're doing what's prudent?
We're taking our time and trying to figure this out.
Okay.
It's, it's not, it's not an ideal situation.
No, it's a bad one.
All the way around, all the way around. And I've gotten, um, some communication from some of the other residents on the road that are, uh, pretty, pretty discouraged that, uh, we're making a decision to pull this for one resident, um.
I might have mentioned that.
Yeah.
Just so you guys know.
So there's no timeline.
Okay.
Have you spoken with Mr. Angus?
I have not.
Because he was filled with hope.
Yeah.
When he left here. And I'm sure his first crop is already in, so he's already had to deal with it not being out, so. I just think it's unfortunate that we told those folks when they were here that we were gonna do, it was a split, had to happen that night.
We, we did say, since that meeting, we had a site inspection from FEMA.
That's fine, as long as it's been communicated to those folks.
To collect, Reno's been in and out of the office.
Good.
And, uh, we're hoping to still get.
There's no win here. This is not a win.
It's not a win-win.
No, there's no win here at all.
Well, other than trying to get the bridge finally replaced.
Yeah, it's the only thing, but that's, that's in the state's hands, correct?
No, we can put an R P out for that. We have a hydraulic study.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
What's another project?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a capacity thing.
Yeah, it is.
No.
We wanna get, we wanna get some of the stuff cleaned up.
And that's FEMA moneyed project? I, I mean, I understand capacity, don't get me wrong.
There's, there's, um.
I fully understand.
The emergency work that is installing the temporary bridge that we, we need to get obligated. And then there's the permanent work that needs to be designed by an engineer.
And so we have to.
And approved and permitted, yeah. That project, to, to, to even get that project out to bid here, uh, take here.
Well, that's kind of one of the things where they're saying is.
Yeah.
You know, so what's our financial obligation to that project? Do we have to pay for everything before we get reimbursed?
Yeah, of course. Yeah.
With, with or without guarantee of reimbursement?
What do you mean?
From FEMA. Do we know they're gonna reimburse?
So FEMA.
Reimbursed by FEMA.
Right.
Eventually.
If we follow their rules.
I'm just trying to get to the root of why we're not moving forward and that you're telling me that, and I understand this, is your office's capacity to prep all these dozens of projects that the flood created?
Yeah, I'd like to get this, this demo stuff off the ground. This was a milestone tonight and the E W P project, another milestone that we're reaching. But we can, we can pivot and start moving towards.
No, I, I'm a doubt finishing some before you get too many going. It's just.
Right.
I wondered if we should put together just a, kind of a timeline on these projects so that we all understand the gravity of how long this is gonna take.
Right.
To not just us, the community, understand that.
Yeah.
This flood that happened in one night is gonna take a decade to repair.
Potentially.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So somebody got repaired that night and somebody's gonna get repaired in a decade. That's how that works. And I think if we can, as a select board, make the community aware of that, that would help. I think a lot of people have, uh, bad feelings because they see something else getting fixed before theirs getting fixed or, you know, they don't, um, they don't understand that some of this stuff is gonna take.
I think, I think people have unrealistic expectations of how, how the systems that we've created work. None of them are efficient.
No.
So I just wanna.
Especially when we're dealing with grants, like the procurement process and the bid process and finding people to bid on stuff is, it takes time.
Right, takes your guys, your two peoples' time.
Kristen.
Um, do you mind if I say something?
Yeah.
Um, so one of the things.
We can get you a seat right up here.
I just called on you.
No, I was hired but was explicitly told to not have to come to every one of your meetings. Um, but that was John Joe it. Please don't know. Uh, so one of the things that I, as I was symposium today about, uh, flood mitigation and hazard mitigation. And one of the things that they have said, they've kicked down to the municipalities, is we need to start doing a long-term recovery planning document. And that would be the sort of thing that would answer all the questions you're talking about. Cause their text, so the first responses, they're gonna talk about doing it for the whole counties. But, um, it was suggested that because we're in a different place than a lot of towns in the county, that we take it on ourselves, so.
We're ahead of the game.
Yes.
We are way ahead of many other towns. Way ahead.
I, I don't, I think we're doing fine and I know how painstakingly slow stuff moves, so.
So the four properties that we just purchased, most towns haven't even put it, didn't get into that program. We were the fourth town and by the seventh town, the money was gone.
Good job.
Yeah. So, and most, and a lot of towns are now having the conversation about mitigation. We've already started that long, a week after.
Good.
So.
We also have a grant, um, we're in the early stages of getting, um, funding for project management training for our entire staff.
Yeah.
So we can take on these projects and have them move more efficiently.
I'm sure they have a, I'm sure there's a play, you know, play, uh, well.
A rubber?
Game, gameplay, no.
Playbook?
Playbook! You know what I'm saying?
There's a half, there's a whole sort of.
Yeah, so we're, we're moving in the direction to be able to handle multiple pro, multiple large proj, projects at the time.
So, and I just wanna give a shout out to the, all you folks who do work in the town manager's office for carrying all these projects that are just, I mean, the normal business of the town hasn't changed. You're still doing all that stuff. And now we have, in addition to the projects we've brought upon ourselves, there are all these, the projects the flood brought upon us. And you guys have done a great job managing that with the resources you have, so really appreciate it.
Thank you. So on a light note, not a light note, but a scary note, I noticed today, flood related, how, how low the Lemoyle is.
Yes.
There's like no water in it and to think that it could go from that to what we have.
Overflowing, yeah.
Scares the shit outta Jesus outta me that. Because a lot of, all, there's so much damage along the waterways that's open face erosion that's happening now. Like if it rains, like last Saturday, or last time it rained, the Lemoyle brown.
Yeah.
It's not, it never used to be brown when it rained. One rainstorm brown, brown and black. So we're still gonna see flooding in places we haven't seen flooding, um, for years to come because it's changed everything.
Yeah.
From that.
So really, the Little River comment reminds me, uh, we did have a site visit for the people bidding on the pedestrian bridge.
Mm-hmm.
And, and they were, I was reminded because at least one, maybe two of the contractors who were there said, look how low that river is, we get to do this now, quick, get it done, get out of here. And they're like, but you never know.
You can't get into the water until July first.
Yeah, but they were just like, if it's low like this.
Do it, yeah.
I know, but, but all the, all the permits, all the aquatic permits are July first.
Right.
Right, but the comment was more gentle about.
I know, I know.
The good news is there were five contractors there and hopefully we'll see three at maybe three.
When's the bid closing?
Actual bids.
Uh, bid closes next Friday.
And, and we, I think there's.
To start July first.
And people have been asking you questions, so it seems like some of those contractors are engaged.
Probably a very decent job.
Yeah.
People are excited about.
And they were local bidders.
All local.
It's a very kind site.
Just around the area.
Yeah.
More so in theville.
Sweet, bridge people.
So we're still in new business or old business?
Yeah, all the above.
So I sent out, um, a recreation policy that was, has been on our website that is quite outdated.
Yeah.
Um, I, I wonder if we wanna consider creating a task force or something to work with the recreation department or else ask them to rework that policy, um, to potentially include some of our town parks and the L B R T trailheads and some of their responsibilities.
It seems like a great project.
But, you know, I sent that old recreation policy out and I heard nothing from anybody, so I'm putting it back out there.
I will, uh, cause I wanted to voice my opinion. I think it's a great idea and I support it. I've, I've asked about, you know, so I've always been concerned that we have a couple of different committees that work independently for the town versus have one committee. So I support it, but it's gonna be a difficult task.
Well, I think, um, we have to figure out some way to move forward on it and not just identify it's difficult.
Well, I think, I think that we could reach out to them and say, we'd like an updated policy and here's some of the parameters that we're looking for. And then that's, I mean.
But it's our policy.
Yeah.
It's not their policy.
It is.
Right, it's a little bit like asking someone to rewrite their job description for their review, I think.
Well, you know, we have some dedicated volunteers that have, have really put a lot of time and effort in certain segments of their recreation. I agree. I'm suppo, I, I agree that we need to do something and I'm not sure. We have an recreation person to pay actually, right?
Yes, we can look at the pol, the town manager's office and look at the policy.
Yeah, well, it's not really any value from what I'm thinking, cause I think that Harvick Trails, Lemoyle Railroad Trail, the Harvick-Bravado Railroad Trail, the Red Farm Buffalo Mountain Trail, um, the eighty acres up on Buffalo that I'd love to see people know more about and be turned into something, all these things should be in the rep every now and again. Now, whether you have a, a small group of folks micromanaging their little section or their little department or their little one thing, that's fine. But I think it all needs to be in the same budget and the same line item and the same, because we can't have four or five different recreational things going in different directions and fund them all from our budget.
Well, and consolidating them also allows for us to look at other opportunities. I mean, you went to the outdoor rec thing. There's a lot of, um, funding out there for outdoor recreation, but who's looking at that? I'm not. I mean, Opie went to the thing, lots of, lots of ideas, lots of information, lots of interest, but how do we, you know? So we need some of those folks helping with that. And it's part of their current policy that they do that, but I haven't found that they have presented any opportunities to us.
Harvick Trails Committee has taken advantage of a lot of grant funding for.
Right, but they, they're not.
So I don't know if it's a task force or.
They're not interested in being part of anything else, though.
I don't know if it's a task force that includes a couple of us with them or whether, or whether they, you know, because.
Opie said that his office could take a look at the policy.
Okay.
Yeah, but that, okay.
So we can start there.
Or do you wanna have two of us do it? I'd be willing to work on it if you wanna have two of us do it, but I don't think we need. I think it's a select board policy and I think it should come from the select board or come from the town manager's office to the select board. I mean.
I just wanna know.
I really, I'm all about it.
I just wanna see how we have action versus just talking then. And then it's another thing that we talked about at a meeting a year ago before we know it, because that happens all the time.
It does, cause there are other things that are higher priority, so.
Yeah, but what's a higher priority? We've got trailheads that have nothing on them and we have stuff in storage.
I think water, sewer are both higher priority, if you're asking.
Well, I'm asking, but I'm also, you know, pointing out that we have things that we have, we've written grants and received materials and we aren't losing them.
Well, Tracy's.
What's the town about the rec committee? Such is a bigger conversation.
Let's, so I'd be happy to work on it with you if you wanna work on it.
Oh, I wanna see.
Go ahead.
Uh, people need to stop parking at the health center to access the real trail.
I thought they could off hours.
Uh, they're not parking off hours.
Yeah, like one day they're at seven.
They're parking in front of the dumpster, they're parking in the.
Well, there's, there's also no signage.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna get a temporary sign. I talked to Tracy today about putting a sign up at the end of Creamery Road with a big P, parking blue P. Yeah, and, uh, is it a blue P or a green P?
And how about the Creamery Road sign? Do we have a Creamery Road sign?
Yeah.
Actually, they're brown for.
That's what, that's what Keith Skidings said. I hear that. I hear that we have a road sign. We have a road sign.
I might know a little bit about recreation and I did.
There's still a road sign on that side of the road.
Oops.
So. That's what, that, yeah, it happens over in.
What a roadside.
Great.
We just need a big P.
Hey, I'll stand out there with one of those flashlights with a cone on.
Don't park and, and the state is, has a whole sign package they're gonna put up at the end of the summer.
Okay, okay.
That's what they said.
Really?
I have another thing. So our, our, um, policy to convey property, town property, that Danny, you and Kaylee were gonna work on and didn't happen. I put together some things, I sent it out, um, people looked at it. Uh, do we, are we taking that up maybe at the next meeting?
Yep, next meeting.
I put it on the agenda. I've had a few grammar things that I've started looking at a little bit and we're gonna look at it.
Because we're also opening the, anybody who sent a offer for the properties that are up for sale.
Yep, and we didn't have a policy.
Opening those at the next meeting.
And we did that.
Yeah, but tell me if I already have any.
Okay.
When is that gonna happen? Because that was, it'll be like a thirty day deal and it's been thirty days.
It's gonna be on the next meeting.
It's been in the, it's posted everywhere. It's spent in the, it's posted everywhere.
Right, but I mean, for how long?
Thirty days, you guys want it there?
It's for two weeks.
By July.
It was posted for two weeks.
I don't remember.
What's the local deadline on that?
Well, we.
Whoa, 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 can we?
So we met on the sixteenth of May, is the last time we met?
Yes.
Yep.
Can we, I'd like to reel this back in. So that, that process is underway and I believe I saw a date of early July.
Yeah, there's only one meeting in July, so that's what's happening in July.
Okay, great.
The twentieth of July, uh, that's June. So why are we waiting until July? I don't understand. It was supposed to be two weeks and we met on the sixteenth of May.
Uh, I was told that it was gonna be posted for thirty days.
Well, thirty days is still not, not July.
Right, but I was just pulled out that this week and so I got it written posted and put in the newspaper and it's gonna run the newspaper for two weeks and everywhere else.
We had a short deadline. We had a, we missed a deadline with the news citizen because of the holiday.
So the deadline to accept offers is July eighth at three P M, according to what we posted. Yep.
Can we, I want us to move on. We have another meeting before then. And this is, we're, we're pulling all around. I do wanna just put a note that at some point, I wanna update on our computer systems and computer security generally.
We'll get me.
I know you, I know you, uh, had consultants and I just wanna update on that at some point, maybe next time or the time after. Okay, next, um, we need to have an executive session for one VSA three thirteen for loan contract discussions to include town manager, business manager and total portfolio. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Yes.
Uh, that's everybody, so motion carries. We go to executive session. Can we go downstairs?